I'd like to call the Monday, November 6, 2017 Oakwood City Council Meeting to the order. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we have our roll call, I was wondering if you would join me in a moment of silence for the victims of the Texas church shooting yesterday. Unfortunately, we've had to do that two months in a row. May I have a roll call, please, Lori?
Mayor Duncan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Byington.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Hilton.
Here.
Mr. Epley.
And do I have a report on the minutes of our regular session and work session on October 2 and October 16 and our executive session and our October 30, I'm sorry, October 30 executive session? Mrs. Hilton?
Yes, Your Honor, I've reviewed the minutes from all five of those meetings and I've found them to be correct and complete and therefore I move that they be adopted as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you so ordered. So we have a lot of visitors here and I get to do some exciting things first. We have our Scarecrow Ward, Scarecrow Row Award winners and so I will come down and take the mic out and announce the winners and I'll probably have to put my glasses on for that. Yeah, our third place, that's much better. Yeah, our third place, that's much better. Our third place winner is Trick or Treat: Smell My Feet by the Garrison Pullman and Our third place winner is Trick or Treat: Smell My Feet by the Garrison Pullman and Quinn family. Quinn family. And I've seen some of them, come on down. And I've seen some of them, come on down. You got it? You got it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. And tell everybody your name. And tell everybody your name.
Daniel.
Daniel.
And where do you go to school, Daniel? And where do you go to school, Daniel?
Uh...
Smith School.
Smith School?
Yeah, Smith School.
Yeah, Smith School.
Are you a lumberjack? Are you a lumberjack? All right. All right. Okay, here, you want to give that to the rest of your families? Okay, here, you want to give that to the rest of your families? Thanks. Thanks. Our second place award is The Scarecrow Bot by the Beck family. Our second place award is The Scarecrow Bot by the Beck family. Are they here? Are they here? Okay, we will make sure we get that award to them. Okay, we will make sure we get that award to them. And then our first place winner is Fright Flyer by Speedy Feet and Jeff Cauldron. And then our first place winner is Fright Flyer by Speedy Feet and Jeff Cauldron. And what's your name? And what's your name?
Jack.
Jack.
Jack? Jack? What's your name? What's your name?
Kip.
Kip.
Kip, all right. Kip, all right. Well, congratulations, Jack and Kip. Well, congratulations, Jack and Kip. Here you go. Here you go. And here, make sure you give this to your parents. And here, make sure you give this to your parents. And then the mayor's award goes to The Scary Potters and the Wamping Willow by the Oakwood And then the mayor's award goes to The Scary Potters and the Wamping Willow by the Oakwood Environmental Committee. Environmental Committee. So they are not here tonight, but we'll get them their award as well. So they are not here tonight, but we'll get them their award as well. And so we're now going to have our beautification awards and that will be a short little video And so we're now going to have our beautification awards and that will be a short little video and so you guys are going to get to see all the great beautification things that are and so you guys are going to get to see all the great beautification things that are going on in Oakwood. going on in Oakwood. We have Trevor and Katie Collier, 797 East Shance Avenue. We will make sure that she gets this. All of you can probably see these, it's a picture of their, of their home along with John and Megan Ewing, 110 Park Road. Are they here? Eric and Jennifer Fester, 145 Hadley Road. Ian Butt and Emma Harris, 238 Southview Road. Here we have. Congratulations. We have Ann and Andrew Jones, 241 Monterey Avenue. We will make sure we get that to the Joneses. We have Chris and Terry Jones, 145 Peach Orchard Road. A lot of Joneses here in this town. Mike and Jackie Jones from 37 Hadley Road. Congratulations. We have Gus and Sharon Leappus, 269 Northview Road. We have David Guy and Phil Leappus, 14 Lonsdale Avenue. You're coming back for two homes, huh? Congra-- okay, accepting four. Thank you. We have Gary and Kim Little, 1824 Far Hills Avenue. We have Jessica and Patrick Ludwig, 315 East Drive. We have Armon and Chuck McAlligot, McAlligot, 236 Telford. We have Sarah and Ryan Chabot, 345 Volusia Avenue. We will make sure that they get that. And our last one is Lawrence and Nancy Welch, 423 Welchr Boulevard. Congratulations. And thank you. Under the, this is the visitors' part of our, of our meeting, but if anyone wants to address council on anything other than the Planning Commission and public hearing related to Point Oakwood, this would be the time for you to come down and address council. Does anyone want to address council on anything other than that issue? All right, then we will go into our legislation and I have a, I have a resolution dedicating the public green space at the northeast corner of Schenk and Oakwood Avenues as Cook Park in honor of former Oakwood Mayor Judy Cook. Whereas for over 30 years and continuing to this day, our friend and respected colleague, Judy Cook, has devoted much of her life in volunteer service to the city of Oakwood and the greater Dayton region. And whereas Judy's service to the city of Oakwood includes three years as members, member of the Oakwood Planning Commission from 1987 through 1989 and 20 years as an elected member of Oakwood City Council, 1990 to 2010, where she served in the role of Vice Mayor from 1996 to 2002 and Mayor from 2002 to 2010. And whereas during her eight years as Oakwood Mayor, Judy distinguished herself throughout the Miami Valley by actively participating in many regional events and efforts and served as a member of many regional organizations to include the following: the Greater Dayton Mayors and Managers Association, serving as President from 2006 to 2008; the First Suburbs Consortium of Dayton, serving as Chair in 2009; the Montgomery County Human Service Levy Council. Vote for that tomorrow. The Sinclair Community College Foundation Board. Vote for that one also tomorrow. And the Montgomery County Homeless Solutions Policy Board. Whereas Judy has further distinguished herself by guiding the city through many challenging issues and-- issues and special events, including the following highlights: establishing the annual Oakwood-Kettering Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration Event; chairing the 2008 Oakwood Centennial Committee, where she led a team of over 250 citizen volunteers to plan, organize, and conduct the fabulous community celebration; opening Hawthorne Hill to the public through extensive efforts and collaboration with the Wright Family Foundation, Carillon Park, and National Park Service; shepherding the development of the former NCR Sugar Camp property into the Sugar Camp Professional Office Park and the Point Oakwood Residential Development. And whereas Judy's efforts in service to her community have been recognized throughout the greater Dayton region, resulting in her selection by the Dayton Daily News as one of the Top Ten Women in the Miami Valley, 2005; by the Junior League of Dayton as a recipient of the Katherine Kennedy Brown Award for Dedication and Commitment to Service in 2016; and by the YWCA as a recipient of the Woman of Influence Award in 2017. Whereas in all her volunteer service, Judy Cook has demonstrated an extreme commitment to fulfilling and exceeding responsibilities of any task undertaken, and a never-ending drive to do what is best for the citizens of Oakwood and the Miami Valley. Whereas Judy and her husband Orville lived on Schenk Avenue from 1982 through 2013, where they often took their young grandchildren to the park, then undeveloped, the Corner Park, to enjoy a snack and watch the traffic go by. And whereas through the private donations of numerous Oakwood residents, a grant from the Montgomery County Solid Waste District, and donations from the Oakwood Historical Society, the Moms Group of Oakwood, and the Oakwood Rotary Club, that same Corner Park has now been developed into a beautiful pocket park with playground equipment to be enjoyed now and in the future by new generations of Oakwood children. Whereas council wishes to recognize Judy Cook's tireless service to the city and finds it as fitting and proper to name the park Cook Park and dedicate the same in Judy Cook's honor. Be it resolved by the Council of the City of Oakwood that the city accords special recognition to Judy Cook for her decades of exemplary public service, through this resolution we hereby name and dedicate the public green space at the northeast corner of Schenk and Oakwood Avenue as Cook Park in honor of our friend and colleague, former Mayor Judy Cook. And this resolution will be signed by all members of council and our city manager, and I would ask for a second.
Second.
Would you call the roll, Lori?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
Congratulations, Judy. Would you like to address counsel?
You know, this is sort of some wonderful trip somewhere over the rainbow that I quite still am trying to believe, but there's so much about this park that reminds me of why I have such a passion for the city I love. And of course, as always, it starts with citizens who always think maybe there's something that they could do that'd make the city even better, and that's how this all started. And then there's the Mary Montgomerys, who as a private citizen, stand up and get the ball rolling and do more than just talk, but organize and work and such. When you think about how many wonderful things that have happened in our city that start with just that, a private citizen with a passion. The idea that the citizens are the ones that called for this and organized it and then brought it to the city. But that is the big difference, I think, between us and other communities, because the citizens have such access to our staff and our council. And when they come, they are welcomed, and they are invited for conversation as long as it might take, making sure that everyone checks the rules and makes sure that everything is done as it's supposed to be done. But you know, this is not something that every community enjoys. It is one of the strongest hallmarks of our city, and I applaud all of you because of you are the ones that carry that out for everybody. You always have an ear to listen, and you're always all approachable, and there's a great transparency, and this is just a wonderful part of our city. And I hope these are the things that people think about when they think about Cook Park, because they're the important things. For me personally, I have to say that to the gurie that this honor shows a kind of endorsement or sense of approval of the things that I did while I was mayor makes me feel very good, because that's important that staff and council has that feeling about that time. I have to end with a funny little story. My six-year-old grandchild, when she came back from this ribbon-cutting ceremony, sat down with a stack of papers and with her magic markers immediately started making all these signs, "Camp Cook." No, "Park," "Cook Park," excuse me, "Cook Park." And she kept going and going, and then she distributed them to every room in my condo. She said, "Now we can all live in Cook Park." And you know, I think I'm just going to leave it there. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Judy. I think I speak on behalf of all of council. We really appreciate your, your efforts for our city and, and your efforts in convincing some of us to engage in public service, and we are honored to know you. So, thank you again. We now have an ordinance to approve updates to our Traffic and General Offenses Code. Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor Duncan. This is an ordinance to approve current replacement pages to the Oakwood Traffic and General Offenses Codes. Each year, we pass an annual housekeeping ordinance to align our local traffic and criminal ordinances with changes that have been made at the state level. This is the first reading of that ordinance, which will adopt our 2017 replacement pages for the traffic code and the general offenses code. This is the first reading, so I make no motion at this time.
Thank you. And next, we have an ordinance to appropriate funds for the Miami Valley Communication Council broadband fiber optic infrastructure project. So with a mouthful. Vice Mayor, Mr. Byington?
Yes. This is a supplemental appropriation ordinance that is necessary to address an important capital project. In 2014, Oakwood partnered with the Kettering, Centerville, and the Miami Valley Communications Council, or the MVCC, which is the lead agency, to apply for a grant under the state's local government innovation fund. We were awarded a grant of $100,000, which provided the resources to study the existing fiber optic infrastructure in the area and develop a plan to add additional fiber and build a network that could be of significant value to all of MVCC's member communities. As a result of that study, a proposal has emerged to expand some 16.3 miles of existing fiber into a 45.2-mile Fiber Ring, or the Fiber Ring Project. This Fiber Ring would provide broadband connectivity to the cities of Oakwood, Centerville, Kettering, Miamisburg, Moraine, Springboro, and West Carrollton, as well as the MVCC. Users of this infrastructure would include all of these communities, as well as customer users, to include local school districts and other nonprofit and tax-exempt organizations. This is an exciting infrastructural development, because there are many long-term uses and benefits of the Fiber Ring. Some of the expected uses include sharing a, sharing of technology services, capabilities, and skill sets among the MVCC communities; joint cooperative projects such as crime mapping and shared 911 systems without having to contract with a third-party data circuit; large data-sharing initiatives such as traffic video, law enforcement dash body cam video, and the like; lower IT and telecommunications expenses and increased internet bandwidth for all of its users; an improved path to MVCC to transmit council video, avoiding anticipated charges for existing council video fiber; direct connectivity to Ohio Academic Research Network; and opportunities for the business development throughout the MVCC communities. The finished Fiber Ring Project will be a combination of city-owned fiber and private network-owned fiber that will be accessed through shared use agreements, and the project is projected to be completed in 2018. The total cost to build the Fiber Ring Project is about $935,000, of which $225,000 would be paid as lease revenue from the Kettering City Schools District. The remaining $710,000 would be paid by the seven participating MVCC communities, with Oakwood's contribution to be approximately $45,000. In order to pursue this project, council must adopt an amendment to the current appropriation ordinance. This amendment will appropriate the additional $45,000 from our capital improvements fund. This motion that I'm making this evening is the first reading of this ordinance, so I'm not going to make a motion at this time, and we will address this again in December at our 11th meeting.
Okay. We'll address all three of these items at our December meeting. Thank you, Vice Mayor Byington. And then finally, I have a resolution to grant approval of an amendment to the approved master plan. I'm sorry, did I miss one?
Mr. Epley.
I'm sorry. I apologize. We have an ordinance to adjust the sanitary sewer rates. Mr. Epley?
An ordinance to amend Appendix A of the Streets and Public Services Code of the City of Oakwood, Ohio, thereby increasing rates charged for sanitary sewer utility services. This is an ordinance to increase rates for the sanitary sewer utility, which serves all residential and commercial structures in the city. The city has operated a sanitary sewer utility for many years, but we do not own or operate our own sewage treatment facility. We have our local sewer personnel and city sewer infrastructure, but sanitary sewer waste is treated at facilities owned by the city of Dayton and by Montgomery County. Each year, we contract with Dayton and Montgomery County for the use of their pipes and treatment infrastructure. The cost of our own city personnel and infrastructure maintenance account for approximately 25% of the sanitary sewer utility rates charged to Oakwood residents, while the cost of contracting services from Dayton and Montgomery County account for approximately 75% of those rates. We've not raised our rates since 2009, but in the eight years since then, we have absorbed five increases in the Dayton rate and three increases in Montgomery County's rate. On average, each Dayton increase was over 4%, and each Montgomery County increase was over 3%. An additional Montgomery County increase of 14% is scheduled to take effect in 2018. Our sanitary sewer utility cannot sustain further increases in these outside costs without adjustment to our rate. The city manager has proposed an increased rate schedule with adjustments to eliminate the minimum use credit, eliminate the second-tier consumption rate, and increase the standard consumption rate. For typical household water usage of 1,000 cubic feet per month, these changes will result in an increase of $12.77 per month on a property owner's combined city utility bill. This is the first reading of this ordinance, so I make no motion at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Epley, and we will address that at our December meeting. So finally, I have a resolution to grant approval of an amendment to the approved master plan for the Point Oakwood Residential Development affecting the southwest portion of said development. This is a resolution to approve an amendment to the Sugar Camp Point Oakwood Master Plan based on a recommendation for approval from the Planning Commission. So according to our, the zoning use for that, we have to have a public hearing at the council, and after introducing this, we'll hold a hearing, and when the hearing is over, council will then proceed to deliberate and vote on this resolution. Before, we'll begin with a presentation by our Assistant City Manager, Jay Weiskircher. However, if you wish to address counsel on this matter after his presentation, because it is an appealable decision, we would want everyone to stand and be sworn in by our law director that the testimony they would give is true and correct and accurate. So if you plan on speaking either on behalf of the proposal or against the proposal, now would be the time for you to rise and, and take the oath.
If you'd all please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in any testimony that you give tonight before council?
I swear it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor, before we get started, under advisement, because of my address across the street, I've been advised to recuse myself from this, and I will step down from the dais.
All right. Thank you. So I don't, there he is. Okay, Jay, would you want to go ahead and begin the public
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The application being presented before you this evening was submitted on behalf of Russell Wealth Management and was heard by the Planning Commission at their meeting on October 18th and is being recommended to you for approval. There are two components to the, to the application. Number one is to amend the Sugar Camp Point Oakwood Master Plan, and the second deals with special use approval to construct a three-story, 22,000-square-foot office building. This is, this depicts the site. Here's Far Hills Avenue here, West Shance Avenue here. This shows the, the Sugar Camp office complex right here, the Point Oakwood Residential Development, and as you can see, this is the, the area in between the, the two different developments, the transition area, so to speak. It's approximately 4.3 acres in size. It's a two-part application, as I already mentioned, to amend the existing Sugar Camp Master Plan. The existing 4.3 acres is currently designated for residential use, and the applicant is requesting the parcel be redesignated for office use. Second part of the proposal deals with the site, site and plan review, and that falls under the special use standards. The application review process, as the mayor has already touched on, there was the first public hearing that was held by the Planning Commission on October 18th, and by a vote of three to zero, the Planning Commission, that city council approved the requested amendment to the Sugar Camp Master Plan, and also the proposed site plan. Now we're holding a public hearing this evening, and by a simple majority vote, council will approve, deny, or approve with conditions the requested master plan amendment, as well as the proposed site plan. Part one is the amendment to the Sugar Camp Master Plan. This was the original master plan that was adopted back in 2007. Again, to get your bearings, Far Hills Avenue here, West Shance Avenue here, the existing Sugar Camp complex right here, the parcel we're looking at is, is right here, and originally that was going to be part of a, a larger residential development in which Point Oakwood Way right here was to wind around and go along the top of the hillside here and connect to, to Old River Trail down here. So that was the original 2007 site plan. That plan was modified in 2008, when the condominium buildings were located, two six-story condominium buildings at the end of Old River Trail down here were added, but again, this parcel up here, this 4.3 acres, that was still designated for residential use. Continuing on, there was a 2012 amendment that added these condominiums on the corner of West Shance and Far Hills Avenue, and also the assisted living center on this parcel down here. This entire parcel here, which is more than 4.3 acres, was still again designated for residential use. And now we have the existing master plan that's in effect today. As a result of a settlement agreement that was entered into earlier this year, which I'll talk about in a moment here, there were four residential lots created on the corner, two on each side of this, this two-plus-acre park area that's on the corner right now of Shance and Far Hills Avenue. There are two residential lots that run along West Shance, and there are two additional residential lots that run along Far Hills Avenue. This is still designated for assisted living. You see the, the Trails condominiums here that has been approved, and we anticipate a groundbreaking there within the next several weeks. You also see-- You also see this parcel here, the parcel we're talking about, and again, still designated for residential use, which is why the applicant is requesting that it be redesignated for office use. If you look back at the 2004 comprehensive plan and also the subarea plan, both identify office uses as a preferred land use within the Sugar Camp area, and both documents also recommend that new construction be limited to three to four stories in height and that architecture and landscaping be compatible with the surrounding existing development. 2000 settlement agreement came about as a result of administrative appeals that were filed on the Trails condominium complex on the bottom along Old River Trail that I already showed you, and also the point that was proposed for the corner of West Shance and Far Hills Avenue. The signatories to that agreement were Hill's Properties, the Oakwood Investment Group, and also a group of immediate neighbors. While the parcel here in question that we're talking about was really not a subject of the administrative appeals, those parties understood the importance of this particular parcel, and they carved out a paragraph in that settlement agreement as to how that parcel would be developed in the future. And that language in the settlement agreement says as follows. "Subject to approval through the City of Oakwood's established process and procedures," which obviously included the Planning Commission meeting that's already taken place, "as well as the meeting that we're at here this evening, the Oakwood Investment Group will pursue the development of a five-acre tract in the southern part of Point Oakwood, an area not involved in either the Trail development or the Point development, to construct an office building no more than three stories high with access from Sugar Camp Circle." So the applicant's request is to amend the Sugar Camp Point Oakwood Master Plan and redesignate the 4.3-acre parcel from residential to office use for the purpose of constructing a three-story, 22,000-square-foot office building to be accessed from Sugar Camp Circle. Part two, site plan review under the special use standards, former site use and the existing conditions. Going back quite far in history, in the upper left-hand corner, you see the tents that appeared on the site in the early 1900s. They were seasonal in nature and were utilized until the 1930s, when more than 50 cabins, as seen right here, were built on the site. Those cabins remained in place until the early... Or, excuse me, until the late 1960s, when the buildings that currently exist on the site were built. The building you see in this particular picture is Building D. It's the closest building to West Shance Avenue and also the largest building on-site at 45,000 square feet. This is a little hard to see, this particular slide, but when Sugar Camp was being marketed back in 2006, this is what existed on the site, and I would call to your attention that the primary entrance into Sugar Camp is right opposite Maze Field. It's right here. And the parcel that we're talking about today, that's a large parking lot, probably 175 to 200 spaces for cars. So from the late 1960s until 2006 and beyond, this area was primarily used for parking. This shows what exists today. You see here, again, it's a little dark, but this is the old main entrance gate into Sugar Camp. Under the proposal from Russell Wealth Management, this gate would be removed. What it also shows is a pretty heavy thicket of trees here, most of which would be retained. Any dead wood would be removed, but some rather significant trees there. The good news is that most of those would remain on the site. You also see in the background here, these large oak trees, they would also be maintained on the site. Looking to the northeast, you see Point Oakwood here in the background. There's a large thicket of trees here. Again, these trees would remain on the site. This is a view looking towards the West Shance Avenue, so here you're looking almost to due south. You see the existing vegetation here. Much of that would remain, although it would be thinned out, some of the underbrush, and it would be replanted, and I'll go into some more details on the landscape plan here momentarily, and I know the applicant will touch on that as well. The important thing is that a lot of the mature trees will remain on the site. And, excuse me, just to the west of that, again, looking towards West Shance Avenue, you see the larger trees that exist there. Again, those trees will be maintained on the site, and here's one more view of those trees as you're looking directly west. Again, those trees are so large and so thick that it's hard to see the other buildings on the Sugar Camp campus. This shows the site plan for the Russell Wealth Management building, consistent with the settlement agreement. Access would be off of the existing intersection here at West Shance Avenue and Sugar Camp Circle. You see the road that comes here and winds down to the L-shaped Russell Building. What you also see here is a 30-space parking lot. We'll talk a little bit more about that. This little appendage here is a bit unique. Both the Kettering Safety folks and also the Oakwood Safety Department commented about the difficulty in safety vehicles accessing this site, not to get in here, but to get out of here. Because of how the parking lot's designed, it's not as easy as just going around here and coming out. So they had to build this little appendage, this little leg here, to allow safety vehicles to back in here and then go out frontways. So that is what that small appendage there is all about. The size of the footprint here is about twice the size of a regular... One of the regular single-family homes down here in Point Oakwood, so it's a much smaller footprint than what we have here for Building D, which, again, is the building that's closest right now to West Shance Avenue. On this particular slide, what we wanted to show you is... This shows you the winding road that leads back into the site, also shows you the 30 parking spaces. The reason there are so few parking spaces is there will only be about 20 people actively working in this building. On maybe an average day, they might have up to 10 visitors, so there won't be a lot of the in-and-out traffic that you see at some of the other professional office spaces on the site. If there is a need for additional parking, they also have cross-parking easements with some of the other existing Sugar Camp parking. There will be the two stone columns right here. One will have the address of the Russell Building. The other will include the Russell Wealth Management name. There will be three light fixtures along here to light the roadway. There's five additional fixtures around the parking lot itself. There are also bollards, low-level bollards here, that light the way for pedestrian traffic. The building itself here is about 149 feet from West Shance Avenue. That compares to Building D, which I showed you earlier, is about 124 feet. So this building sits back an additional 25 feet from West Shance Avenue. I would also like to add that the distance here between West Shance and the edge of this parking area is about 53 feet. This is the south elevation of the building. Again, I would like to point out, this would be the second smallest building on the Sugar Camp campus. It's roughly 22,000 square feet, or in other words, it's half the size of the Building D that we mentioned earlier, which is the other building that fronts right now on West Shance Avenue. The proposed materials here, and again, the applicant will talk about this in more detail, is a buff-colored limestone. There's metal coping on this roof. Again, this was to pick up some of the materials already being used on the Sugar Camp site. This is the elevation that you would see if you were driving south along Far Hills Avenue and you were looking to the west. This shows a utility pad here where there would be some condenser units that would be screened with a fence and also vegetation. You see the vegetation screen continue up here. Part of that is because there's a retaining wall here that helps hold up part of the parking lot that exists. There's also a railing right here. Again, there's very extensive landscaping on this site, which we'll talk about here This shows the north elevation, which is going to be mostly hidden by the large thicket of existing trees there, but I wanted to point out, too, there's fabric awning that is supposed to remember the heritage and the history of the tents that were once on the Sugar Camp site. There's also a glass railing. These are primarily the offices for the partners up here, so they enjoy the view looking out towards the City of Dayton and also the UD campus. You see some skylights right here as well. And then if you were inside the Sugar Camp Complex, Sugar Camp Circle, looking to your east, this is what the building would look like. You see the Russell Wealth logo right here. Again, you see the metal panel. You see the limestone material being used. I also wanted to maybe refer back to this particular rendering. We'll talk about this in a little more detail. You also see the Russell Wealth Management sign here. As part of their application, they wanted that to be backlit, much like most of the signs are in the Far Hills Avenue Business District. However, Planning Commission has recommended to you that that sign can remain, but it was their recommendation that it not be backlit. And again, this is a more finished rendering of what the building would look like. Again, this would be the view if you're inside Sugar Camp Circle, looking to the east. Very extensive landscape plan that was developed for this particular application. This landscape plan was done by the Sebenfeller Company with advice and consent from Carol Collins. The primary focus was obviously screening along West Shance Avenue here, as well as the hillside down here. Let me speak first to what's being proposed along West Shance Avenue. Right now, there's some weedy undergrowth here that would be removed and replaced with plant material of various sizes, textures, and colors. The plantings would include deciduous trees as well as coniferous trees and plants. So this area would be heavily planted. This little turnaround that you see right here would be heavily planted, and that former access or gate site here would, again, be covered over with planting. So those plantings would continue all along the full length of the parking lot area. What you see here in white with the dots, these are all these large trees that we referred to previously. Those will all be maintained on the site. You see this thicket of trees that we talked about earlier. Again, that will be maintained. So most of the large trees will be maintained on the site, and they'll be enhanced with this plan developed by Sebenfellers. This is the hillside that currently exists between the top of the hill, where the proposed building is going to go, and the residences at Point Oakwood. Rather just putting up a screen of some type of juniper or something, what they're calling for is to really try to make this look like a natural wooded area, again, with deciduous trees, coniferous plantings, grasses, what have you, so it looks like a naturally forested area. And they're also talking about putting in rather significant plant material at planting, so these would not be trees that would be an inch and a half or two inches in diameter. These would probably be trees that would be three and a half to four inches in diameter, and some of the evergreen trees would be fairly large at planting as well, so you get an immediate impact. You also see here, there's some plantings within the interior of the parking lot. Again, what you see here are some retaining walls, and again, these will be planted on the backside to provide screening. This shows you what it would possibly look like as you're coming up West Shance Avenue. Again, you see there, there are some flowering trees, there are grasses, there are coniferous trees, there are deciduous trees. It would be a heavy planting along there for year-round interest and color. And looking up the hill, again, this is what they're trying to achieve with random plantings that would have a very natural appearance. That's all I have right now in terms of my summary of the application. What I would like to do, Your Honor, if it's okay with you, is come back after the applicant has had a chance to make their presentation and also the public has had a chance for input, and then talk about the special use standards that apply to the site plan itself.
All right. Everybody comfortable with that? That sounds, again, a very thorough report as usual, and we appreciate all the work you've done on this. So who do you want to address council now? If you can state your name and address for the record, thank you. I know you have been sworn in. Welcome.
Your Honor, my name's Jeff Samuelson. I represent Russell Total Wealth Management as a developer, and I live in Cincinnati, 3420 Aston Place in Cincinnati. I wanted to take a few minutes to thank you for your time, and I wanted to thank Jay and the staff for working with us hand-in-hand throughout this entire process. The entire process has benefited from that communication and that direct interaction between staff and our development team, and we've learned quite a bit about what the City of Oakwood really has in mind for Point Oakwood, and we feel like that communication has really aided in developing and shaping that plan. I wanted to introduce a couple of people that are here. Our architectural team from Glazer Works, Lynn Wirick, who will be presenting shortly, and Michael Maltinsky is here. We have a representative from Russell Total Wealth Management, and we also have Matt Arnovitz, who has represented us for the property. And one short story, if you may. When I was a kid, I went to school south of town, but I lived north of town, so I used to drive through Oakwood as a kid. Because of that interaction of driving through Oakwood and seeing all the beautiful architecture, it actually encouraged me to become an architect and to go to the University of Cincinnati School of Architecture. So in a large degree, I have a very soft spot in my heart for the City of Oakwood, and because of that, it was very important for us to really pay close attention to the context that Oakwood has and to use that context to help develop that plan. So with that, I'm going to stop talking. I'm going to allow the architects to do what they should do and tell you a little bit more about this, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Samuelson. Again, if you could state your name and address for the record, and welcome.
Thank you. It's good to be here. I'm Lynn Wirick. I am one of the architects of the building. Address is 5806 Pandora, Cincinnati, 45213. Address is fifty-eight oh six Pandora, Cincinnati, four five two one three. This, every time I tell somebody about this building, I say the same thing. You don't get many opportunities like this as an architect. It's a, it's a wonderful community, it's a beautiful site, and, uh, he's been great client, so it's really a pleasure to work on this, and we're happy to be here. There are really three sort of, three sets of goals that drove the development of this project. First set were really functional, have to do with the functional requirements of, uh, Russell and their clients and their aspirational requirements as well. The second set of goals deals with the character of the site. Uh, as I said, it's a great site. It has this long and really interesting history. It's been a parking lot, it's been office building and parking lot, it's had tents and cabins and all kinds of stuff on there. But most recently, in its current state, it's this very park-like setting, and so one of our goals was to try to preserve that park-like, the park-like nature of the site and, uh, enhance it if we could. And the third broad set of goals had to do with mediating between this existing, uh, development of the office buildings on the west, and then this much smaller-scale residential development to the east. We'll talk a little bit more about that later, but, uh, this first slide is sort of a good place. Uh, Jay did a, a great job of introducing the, the context here. Um, and as he mentioned, uh, we're about, the footprint is about twice the size of the typical houses in Point Oakwood. It's about a third of the size of the footprint of the, um, closest building to Shant's there, so we're really sort of right in the middle. Um, size-wise, of course, we're a little bigger than the houses, we're about the, um, a little bit bigger than the smallest building in, uh, Sugar Camp Development. I, I won't spend too much time on these first few drawings. These were technical drawings that we presented to the Planning Commission to explain how we're getting utilities, um, to and from the site. Um, this was an existing conditions survey showing what's on the site now, utility plan. Um, the grading plan, which, I think what's significant about that is, is we tried to minimize the amount of grading on the site. There's really very little considering, uh, the size of the building and the, the steepness of the site, but it was important for a couple of reasons. One goes back to trying to preserve the site as much as possible, the way it is now, and the other just had to do with preserving those existing trees. The more grading you do around the trees, the greater chances of losing those. Um, this last technical drawing was, uh, an analysis of this electrical site plan that shows that we're lighting the parking, the drive, and our building, uh, but that the light levels fall off as you get to the border of the site, and we're not introducing any more illumination around the perimeter. So, going to the site, um, again, this is a view standing on Sugar Camp Circle as you've turned into the entrance to the, to the office complex there, looking, uh, towards the northeast, so back towards Point Oakwood. And you can see, we've got these beautiful mature trees, um, sort of grassy, rolling lawn, and, uh, you know, it's a little overgrown, oops, excuse me. It's a little overgrown, uh, in here, but there's some very significant trees, and we wanted to preserve as many of those as possible. So, the first thing we did in terms of developing the landscape plan was to do an, a, a survey of the existing trees. So what you see here are the significant trees, meaning they're over two inches in, in girth. Um, probably most significant is this line of existing mostly oaks that go through the site diagonally along Shant's. It's, it's a mix of trees, mostly locusts and hackberries and the odd mulberry in there, but still, you know, nice mature trees. And then to the north, again, uh, this sort of grove that's north of our proposed building, um, significant trees, again, a mixture of locusts and hackberry. But then, if, yeah, I'm sure you know the site, you drive by there and you see these big rows of trees, but it's really weedy underneath, so one of the things we wanted to do was to preserve the screening that these trees offer, but clean them up underneath and go back and replace that overgrown understory with, um, something a little nicer. This is just a schedule of the proposed plans that's related to, um, the site plan. So, uh, this is the same slide that we saw before, this is the rendered site plan. Again, the existing trees are shown uncolored in white through here up in here. And these are all the ones we're trying to preserve. There are a number of them that are stressed or dead already, um, that we'll remove and we will replace those with new trees. But the main thing that we're doing is, again, along Shant's, we want to clear out that understory of the, the weedy stuff, and go back in with a real mixture of, um, deciduous and evergreens so that we have some year-round color, year-round texture and screening. Um, we have a number of flowering plants in there, bloom in various seasons, so, um, you know, we're screening the parking lot, but at the same time, we hope that we're adding to it and making this much more attractive frontage along Shant's. Again, to the, to the north, we want to clean out the, the overgrown understory and extend the lawn out there. And then along the east side of the site, between the Russell Building and the Point Oakwood neighborhood, um, you know, the, the typical solution you see a lot of times with developments is, you know, we're required to put a screen there, so we plant a solid wall of evergreens. And, uh, while that can be effective from the screening standpoint, it's kind of an alien thing, especially on a site like this, so we wanted a much more naturalistic approach to the landscaping while still achieving the screening and giving the Point Oakwood residents, um, a sense of privacy. So we've done that by using a variety of trees and clustering them, spreading them out along the slope of the site and along the length of that property line. And, and again, it's a mixture of, um, different deciduous and evergreen trees, and, uh, the, the hope is that instead of being a wall of trees, it reads more like, um, a woods or groups of groves of trees there. Couple of other things here, I think as Jay mentioned, we have a couple of retaining walls here and here. Those are fronted by trees, uh, the bases of those are, are planted with, uh, low to medium-scale plants, sort of soften the base of those walls. Walls themselves would be covered with, uh, climbing vines, and along the top of the walls, we have grasses there, so that when you see them from below, it, it softens the top of the wall, you don't have a hard edge you're looking at. We also want the parking to feel, um, more like, less like a parking lot, more like a, a parking court. So to that end, we've introduced some landscaping in the center. Uh, we have a low stone seat wall around that area. Same along here, there's a little curving seat wall with stone there and some landscaping, which helps screen the parking, but it also makes it feel a little less like a parking This is the same plan, but not rendered, which in some ways is more effective for me, because you can see just how, how did, sorry, you see just how dense the landscaping is that we're adding across these areas. That gets a little bit lost in the rendered site plan, I think. This is the architectural site plan, which, um, there are a couple of things on there. It was mentioned that there are, are two stone pillars out here. They're sort of similar to the ones across the street in Hatcher Hills. Uh, there's a rendering of those here, they're about two feet square and six feet tall, and they're made of stone, same stone as the building, and they're topped with a, um, translucent glass lantern, so there's a little light there. And again, they would have plaques, one on each, uh, pillar with the name of the company, the Russell logo and, uh, the street address. There is a small, uh, mechanical pad down in this area here, it has, uh, three small compressors on it, and the proposal with that is, there would be a, a wooden screen wall that's designed to recall the, um, uh, the cabins that were on the sites in the nineteen thirties. So sort of wood slat that repeats the pattern of the siding on, on those. In addition to that, we'll see in some of the renderings later, there's, um, landscaping that screens those as well. I think the, the other thing with the site plan is it starts to talk a little bit too about how, uh, we're trying to use the massing and the scale of the building to mediate between the large-scale office development of Sugar Camp and the smaller-scale houses that are down the hill from us. So, to that end, we have an L-shaped building, and it presents its longest elevations here and here, uh, to Shant's and to the Sugar Camp Development. So those elevations are about a hundred feet long, um, and the elevation of our nearest neighbor in, uh, Sugar Camp is about a hundred and twenty-five feet, I think, so they're similar scales. But what this massing lets us do is to prevent, uh, present a very small-scale face to the houses down here. So this elevation, that elevation, the width is about, um, forty-seven feet, and that compares to the houses, which are fifty-five to sixty feet, something like that, so they're starting to be of a similar scale. The other thing the shape of the building does is it lets the areas where, where the people are working, where the offices are, uh, take advantage of the views to the north and northeast, but at the same time, it turns them a little bit away from the houses that are down below, so they're not staring down into those houses. In terms of architectural context, um, again, we have the Sugar Camp buildings, they're all very similar, they're, uh, sort of these large-scale, um, quasi-brutalist style, but terrible with the pointer tonight. But there are three main materials. There's the stone, of course, very large-scale sort of rubble stone, there's these large metal, um, mansard roofs, and then large areas of glass, and that's the vocabulary So when we started developing the aesthetics of this building, again, we wanted to design a building that was clearly of its time, but related to its neighbors on both sides. And so we have used very traditional materials. Um, limestone is about as traditional as it gets, um, and that sort of speaks to the office buildings across the way. It's a different type of stone than the office buildings, they're very large-scale rubble. This is a much more residential scale, the four-to-eight-inch-tall pieces of stone that are, uh, two to four feet long. So not exactly the same, but again, it's all part of that process of trying to mediate between the large scale and the small scale. There's a little bit of, of metal along the top, again, has a relationship to the existing office buildings. There is some metal used around. There's a little metal that's around the, the window openings as well to try to play up the depth of those openings. What else are we doing here? We, going back to, to the idea of the site, uh, there are large areas of glass on the ground floor that let you look through the buildings to preserve the, the views of the site. As you come up to the building, you see through parts of it, and you can see the views down the hill and across to downtown Dayton. Um, it also helps the building to sit more lightly on the site. Going back to this, again, as was mentioned previously, this elevation is the west elevation, it faces the Sugar Camp Development. Again, that's a longer, larger-scale elevation that's more appropriate to the office buildings beside of us. The north elevation, which probably not many people are gonna see. Top elevation here is the one that faces, uh, Shant's. Again, a larger-scale elevation, a little more appropriate to a public way like that. And then the east elevation that faces the Point Oakwood neighborhood. We spent a lot of time with this one, working on the scale of it, um, an attempt to, to, we've broken the massing up into smaller pieces. You see here, and it's again, it's, we have bays that pop out here, we have some dormers on the roof, and these are not dissimilar, uh, to what you see in the houses down below in terms of the way the masses are broken up by these smaller-scale elements. Again, we have the landscaping in front of, uh, the screen wall in front of the mechanical equipment, and then the landscaping going up and softening those retaining walls. The other thing that we've done on this side is we actually stepped the building down a portion of it to two stories above grade, again, just trying to bring the scale down on the residential side of things. This is the rendering you saw before, showing the approach from, um, or the view from Sugar Camp Circle of our drive that's winding through the, uh, line of trees, which we've removed from this rendering because you can't actually see the building with those trees there. Now, these next set of slides, I'm gonna show you two versions of each view. This is the one, uh, as you're driving up Shant's heading towards the west, and we've taken the landscaping out of the foreground. So that's the view with the existing trees removed, with our proposed landscaping removed, and that's what you would see. Uh, you'll notice that there's sort of, there's already a, a berm that runs along part of Shant's there that further screens our parking, and then our landscaping is going up that berm and across the top. And then the next view is the one with the landscaping back into the, the view, so the existing trees and the proposed plantings as well. Similarly, there are two versions of this view. This is from, um, Point Oakwood. It's standing in the middle of, I think it's Point Oakwood Way, sort of just past the last house that's built there on the, uh, west side, looking up the hill towards the proposed building. And again, we've removed the, uh, landscape from the foreground, and that's what you would see. And then that's with the landscaping back in place that we're, we're proposing to do there. And again, the idea is that you're not looking into a wall of trees, but you perceive that as a, as a grove going up the side. And that is what I have to say. I'll be glad to take questions.
Any, any questions for, uh, Mr. Wyrick?
Uh, yeah, I do. Uh, so the, can you go back to that last slide you were just looking at on the hill? I'll refer to it as the hill, yeah, right there. So I see you planting trees, uh, that won't be grass then, will it? It'll just be wild? I mean, you're not gonna...
No, the, the proposal is that, you know, we're maintaining lawn, or we're actually trying to make it better.
Okay, so there will be grass all along the hill?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And we're planting the trees and the shrubs and everything on top.
Okay, so it'll all be maintained all the way down the hill?
That is the plan.
Okay, okay. Um, and then I know Jay brought it up, but you may know this too, the, uh, the backlight signs, the one that would, the planning commission, just clarify for me, which one will, there's two signs on the building, correct?
Yes.
Will either one be lit?
Uh, the one facing Sugar Camp.
The one facing Sugar Camp?
Yeah.
So that means the one facing Shant's, is that correct? It will not be lit? Is that right? Or is it facing...
It's this one. It's the one that actually faces more towards the east, so towards Far Hills.
Oh, so facing Point Oakwood, I'll call it, okay.
Yeah.
All right, that one will be, that is a sign, but it's not lit, so the one, so it's on the other side of the building. Facing Point, or excuse me, facing Sugar Camp will be lit?
Yes.
Okay, and those are the only two signs on the building?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Other questions?
I have one more.
Okay.
Um, so with the, it's, it brings it back to the hill, um, in, with the hill being close to what I'm gonna call the hard surface, the parking lot, what has been done about, uh, the potential runoff? You know, now it's, it's grass, so water, erosion, you know, it'll kinda go where it wants, but with the hard surface being added, what is gonna be done? But with the hard surface being added, what is going to be done about water collecting in the parking lot?
Yeah, it's actually going off in the other direction. Find the correct plan. So this is the grading plan that you see here. So, you know, we're maintaining the slope down there, and that's going to be planted, and it'll be grass, as you say, similar to the way it is now.
Okay.
More vegetation. These are the drains in the parking lot, so the water flows sort of from the north and south into those, and that goes this way and ties into the existing storm system there.
Okay.
So some of these catch basins up here already exist. We're tying back in in that area.
So it's not coming...
It's not coming.
Towards Shance?
It's not going down the hill.
And it's definitely not going down into Point Oakwood?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Who else did the applicant want to speak? Again, if you could identify your name and address for the record and welcome.
I'm Matthew Arnovitz with CBRE, and my address is 1440 Passport Lane, Dayton, Ohio, 45414.
Thank you.
I have been lucky to be the Realtor on this project with Russell Total Wealth and Jeff Samuelson, and we started this project almost 18 months ago looking for potential sites. Very fortunate that we came up with several sites in the area and worked through all them, and this one came to the pinnacle of the list in terms of a great site for this opportunity. I've been a Realtor for 33 years in the Dayton market and lucky enough to be fourth generation doing real estate and commercial real estate in this area. And you only get the opportunity very seldom to do corporate headquarters types buildings and have a client that's willing to do the investigation and hire the team to do this type of a really in-depth project. And, you know, we're very fortunate they're here today and have selected the site, and I also happen to be on the board of Beth Abraham Synagogue, and this presentation was made to the synagogue prior to the planning commission meeting, and they voted to approve this use in this site on the grounds of Sugar Camp, and they're looking forward to Russell Wealth joining the campus. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Arnovitz? All right, thank you. Who else from the applicant wishes to address counsel? Okay, so Jay, is... Did you want to now talk about the use standards? Or do we want to have the opposition speak first?
That's down... Down the...
Okay, so what we'll do is, for people that want to speak either in favor or against this proposal, we'll have you come down and speak, and we'll... Since you raised your hand in the back, we'll have you come down first. Is that why your hand is raised? All right. Now, the ground rules are, I'm leaving here in less than five hours, unlike the last time, but, you know, we want to hear everyone's testimony and everyone's opinion before we deliberate. I would ask you to try to keep your comments brief and try not to replicate comments of other people have spoken. Once everybody has the opportunity to speak, though, we will close the public hearing. We will not accept any additional testimony. So this is your time to come down and speak to your heart's content. Again, if you could identify yourself, address for the record, and welcome.
Thank you, hon. Thank you, counsel. My name is Kevin Jones, and I live at 215 Point Oakwood Way, and that would be the house, the last house at the top of the hill. So the hill is... It's just to the left of my house, so it's up there. But anyway, I had an opportunity to speak to the city and see the plans and was very impressed with the time that you guys spent on the landscaping and working with the hill. And some other comments were brought up about the drainage that I believe have been addressed. And so I was going to be here tonight to say that I'm the only one in Point Oakwood that this probably would affect unless somebody builds a house on the property next to me, but that doesn't appear to be anytime soon. But I just want to let you know, you have my full support as the lone resident of Point Oakwood, and I think it would be fantastic for Sugar Camp and also for just the city of Oakwood in general. So I just wanted to take this time and say thank you for the opportunity to speak with you guys, and I appreciate everybody, and thanks to you of Oakwood.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Okay, who else would like to testify? Let you go ahead first. You've been here early.
I've been here since 6:50.
Okay.
I wanted the front seat. My name is Barb Cerny. I live at 201 Maze Field Road.
Could you spell your name for me?
C-E-R-N-Y.
NY.
The picture that Jay showed of the gate was taken from my driveway. All of us live in Oakwood for very specific reasons. It might be the school system. It might be where the city is located. Yeah, there's my driveway. Thank you very much, Jay. But I would say that 100% of us move to Oakwood because of the way it looks and feels. The architect here talked about driving through Oakwood, and there is nothing more special than living in a place that people want to drive around, come to Halloween for, or say, "Oh, you live in that beautiful city of Oakwood." You talked about doing things in collaboration, and nobody bothered to come and talk to the people of Hatcher Hills throughout this whole entire project. And I am here representing the 110 Hatcher Hills residences and the 66 people who signed the petition to have something done about this proposal and not to have it built the way it is proposed. The Hatcher Hills goes from Shance to Southview, from Kramer to Far Hills. What we are looking at is wanting to preserve the beauty, the architectural integrity, the historic nature of the heritage that we have in Oakwood. The 2004 comprehensive plan talks about the surroundings and making sure that all architecture meets the surroundings. And I think everyone has taken this out of context. They're looking to Sugar Camp and going, "Oh, it matches Sugar Camp." But remember, Sugar Camp was only purchased 10 years ago by the city of Oakwood. We in Hatcher Hills look south to the rest of Oakwood, to what needs to be in this space and to keep that architectural integrity and beauty. As Judy Cook said, "It starts with us citizens," and the strongest hallmark of our city is keeping the residents, you know, and what we believe in. And we do want to welcome new businesses. I'm not saying that we don't want Russell. Please, new business is the lifeline of our community. Sugar Camp has gone through morph after morph after morph. We've watched it go from houses to old folks' homes, to duplexes, to quads, to apartments. And so this is kind of outside of what we've been promised for the last 10 years, which were residences right across from us. Hatcher Hills is much, much closer than Point Oakwood. There are about 10 of us that live directly across from this building. You talk about the character of the site. I'm talking about the character of the houses that have existed for the last 100 years. You talk about preserving a park-like nature. I talk about preserving the integrity of the architecture in Oakwood that's been around for 100 years. You talked about mediating between the office to the west and the residence to the east, but nobody bothered to mediate to the residence to the south. It's not about size. It's not about elevation. Those are not relevant in what we are asking. The facade of the building is what is relevant to us. The architecture is not related to its southern neighbors, nor to Point Oakwood. It is related to Sugar Camp, and Sugar Camp has not been a part of Oakwood for the 100 years that the rest of us have been. We wish to get to a win-win-win situation with Russell, with the city, and with the residents of Oakwood. You say you have 22,000 square feet in that building to house 14 to 20 employees. If my public math is correct, that's 1,500 square feet per person, which does not maximize the tax revenue that is capable of being carried on that plot of land to the city of Oakwood, nor is it maximizing the property tax to the city of Oakwood. So for a win for Oakwood, it needs to follow the 2004 comprehensive plan and meet the rest of the Oakwood, not just Sugar Camp. The companies need to be right-sized to that property. 14 people on 4.3 acres is kind of overkill. The tax revenue needs to maximize either through property taxes or income taxes, and that will not happen with such a small company in such a large space. The win for residents is the 2004 comprehensive plan is met, that the new construction meets with the surrounding neighborhoods, all of the surrounding neighborhoods, and not Sugar Camp only, that it is a transition between the Sugar Camp buildings and the architectural wonders of the houses around it. It's a win for Russell if you are more exposed to the traffic that need to come by and see your building. With your desire for all of that beautiful landscaping, nobody's going to know you're there. Traffic is on Far Hills. Traffic is not on Shance Avenue. So I believe that you should be welcomed to Oakwood with no reservations, but it needs to be on a parcel of land that is right-sized for 14 to 20 employees and that preserves the architectural integrity of the Oakwood people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Cerny? Who else would like to please come forward and, again, state your name and address for the record? Welcome.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Stefan Sesta, I live at 20 West Shance Avenue, directly across from Point Oakwood. I live there... Have been living there with my family for the last two and a half years. As you may recall, I was part of the opposition with the Point Oakwood plans with the residential apartment buildings. We actually went into litigation with the city and the developer, and we were able to strike, I think, a very fair compromise that worked for everyone. And I do live in Hatcher Hills, and I think I'm representing myself, so I'd like to speak for myself, and I'll say that I speak for the folks in Point Oakwood that were part of the settlement agreement that agreed to a three-story office building at this site. I want to welcome Russell Wealth Management. I've said so in the planning commission meeting, their investment, quite frankly, the effort that was made from the architect, from the landscaper, to tie things into Sugar Camp and bridge the neighborhood from Point Oakwood into the rest of Oakwood as well. I think you've done a fabulous job. From our property, we can actually see this building, and I'm quite satisfied that it'll add value to the property that we have. It's going to round out Sugar Camp, and quite frankly, we have no objections, not in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sesta? I'm sorry, you're fine, thank you. Who else would like to address counsel on this matter? Go ahead, yeah, you raise your hand before, and then we'll have you next, okay?
Me?
Yes, you, I'm sorry. Again, state your name and address for the record.
I'm April Jordan. I'm appearing on behalf of Oakwood Investment Group.
Okay.
I'm a lawyer. My offices are at 10 West Second Street in downtown Dayton. Jay, thank you for your presentation tonight. We appreciate it. I'm the public tonight. I am not the applicant, but wanted to appear to express the support of Oakwood Investment Group for the application that has been made. We all remember, this is a controversial property. The settlement agreement that Mr. Sesta referenced was negotiated at length. It was, I think, the fervor of the negotiations represented how sincerely people held their beliefs about this property, and it ended up being our guideline for what we're going to look at. And we are not going to find a better fit under the settlement agreement than this building. This is exactly what was contemplated under the settlement agreement, what the homeowners agreed to, what the city agreed to.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Jordan? All right, thank you. So now, if you could come up and state your name and address for the record and welcome.
Hello, my name is Sarah Wechter, and I live at 231 Northview Road. And I, first of all, want to thank you guys for the presentation. The presentation was great, and I called earlier and got some information from Lori Stasiel, and I really appreciate that. You guys have been very informative and transparent in all of this. I want to say that I, living so close to this development, that I think it is a good fit. I think that the building complements and complements Point Oakwood. It complements our Hatcher Hills, the building material, and I just think it's a good fit. And I also really appreciate all of the work that you guys have done on the landscaping to soften it, to give it a park-like feel for both the residents across the street and in Point Oakwood. And I also want to compliment on the size of the building and the employees that are there. One of our main concerns has been traffic with having little kids and especially with the park across the street. And so I think that the traffic doesn't look like it should be much of an issue with that. And so I just wanted to voice my opinion on it.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Sarah? All right. Who else would... You can come back again.
I forgot to mention that I represent the 66 people from Hatcher Hills that want this to be changed.
Yeah, you stated that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You stated that, yes. Who else would like to address counsel? Okay, welcome. I know who you are, but you need to say it for the record anyway.
I'm sorry?
I say, "I know who you are, but you need to state your name for the record anyway."
Well, I was going to give you my name, but... Whatever they say about me, I deny it all. Yeah, I'm here on behalf of my neighbors. You know, Jeff Schulman, the head of the planning commission, asked me a question when we appeared here before that. He said, "Irving, you live three blocks away from this. What do you care?" I walk every day, a lot of times on Shance. And I think a lot of my neighbors do that, too. So I have to look at it when I walk. But I drive my car up and down Shance. That's my way of coming from downtown or from any direction. On Shance, I drive my car, so I've got to look at this building for the rest of my life. And you know what we do here this evening, or what you finally decide to do with this? We're going to be stuck with for 200 years. None of us will be around for 200 years, but in the meantime, we'll be stuck with it, and all of our successors and people that buy our homes and live here, they're going to be stuck with it. So I'd urge you to go slow and carefully consider how this whole thing fits. It's already been said, but I'll just add my two cents. The architectural design of this building, as far as I think I speak the sentiments of my neighbors and the 66 people who have said no, the architectural design is even more offensive than the existing three office buildings that are to the west and the synagogue, which are all part of the same thing. Just my personal feeling is more offensive than those buildings, and I can't imagine how anybody that has a house in Point Oakwood or up and down Far Hills Avenue or any of the 200 people that live in Hatcher Hills, I just can't imagine how they would feel that we couldn't do better. The parking lot... So I have some questions. Only you can answer.
Well, we can't answer questions. We cannot answer your questions, but if you want to address your question...
But I'll pose a question.
Yes, that's perfect.
And then you can consider it silently if you wish, and I understand. I'm not trying to cross-examine.
If you were, you would win.
Pardon me?
If you were, you would win.
Yeah. Anyhow, one question I want to pose is, why can't the parking lot be on the other side of the building? That's a common sense question, okay? That's, that's a common sense question, okay? Why, why can't we, why can't we get an architectural design that is a bridge, or a blend between the buildings to the west, these, these commercial buildings that have been there to the west, and all of the residential buildings that are in Point Oakwood, and on the other side of Far Hills Avenue on the east side, and all of the residential area in the Hatcher Hills area? Why can't we come up with a building that would serve as a blend, or a bridge between those two architectural styles? And now, then I wanna digress just for a moment, and then come back to try to answer my own question of why can't we have a, an architectural blend between these two opposing, supposedly opposite architectural designs? I, I spoke to the Russell people about two months ago, and they impressed upon me their desire, because you understand the business they're in, they're in the business of, of attracting people, they said high net worth people, but I'm sure, whatever that means. And they, they wanna try to, their, their business is to advise them on investments, which is fine, I mean, the world's full of people like that, and, and they do a good job. And what they impressed upon me is that they like this location because of the exposure that it gives them. Okay? Well, that's natural. I mean, they're in the business of wanting to, wanting to attract people to, to their business, yeah. This building is located one block from Far Hills Avenue where most of the traffic is. I have given you a photograph taken from Far Hills Avenue up toward the hill, and I'd like you to look at it, I, I distributed to all of it. There is zero exposure because of the other houses that are right there blocking the exposure. The exposure on Shance Avenue is gonna be covered half of the year anyhow by trees. The other half of the year is when the leaves fall off, it's gonna be exposed, but the traffic on Shance Avenue is not as, not as great as it wa, it would be on Far Hills Avenue. So I, I think that if they're really interested in exposure, I've given you another diagram as an alternative for this building to be placed on one and a half acres, which might be a more appropriate size, at the corner of Far Hills Avenue and Old River Trail. And you have a diagram there that shows that. To me, that, that makes a whole lot of sense to accommodate their need for exposure. So I'd, I'd like to take that into consideration in your final decision to hopefully not approve of this application. So then, what could be done with this property where everybody wins? The city of Oakwood wins, the neighbors win, maybe conceivably, the Russell might concede that they win. I have given you an artist diagram of a, of a building that would serve as a bridge, as a platform, and this building is an office building. This building looks like a residence, and if that, if something like this could be accomplished, then I think the whole thing would fit together and everybody would win. So this alternative building, to be a little bit more specific, would have a more classic residential design but have an office use. It could be one to two stories in height. It could have underground parking, which is something that I personally would push Let me talk about tax revenue. Something I hope that I know is you're a dear to your heart. With the repeal of the Ohio death tax, that's naturally there, and I gotta tell you, from whatever I see, you're all doing a great job trying to make, make ends meet, and I know it's difficult. Anyhow, the tax revenue for this particular building would, would be fourteen, as I understand it, employees. Well, that's fine, that's, that's better than zero employees. But the, the alternative building, which, which I would suggest that could be built, and I, I've done some rough calculations on this, could generate tax revenue for, from twenty-eight employees. I've already talked to one organization that said they would be willing to kick in, and they have twenty-two employees. And I don't think it would be too much of a stretch to find another organization that would occupy this office building to, to bring it up to somewhere around twenty-eight employees. So if, in the final analysis, Russell could be convinced to go to the 1.5 acre tract and, and have their, their fourteen employees there with greater exposure, then the city would come up with those fourteen plus another twenty-eight, and the whole sum total of it would be forty-two, somewhere in the vicinity of forty-two employees, which would generate tax revenue. Not only that, you'd have an additional building, which would generate real estate tax revenue for the schools, but a little bit to the city, as I understand it. I, I don't wanna repeat anything that's been said, but I wanna try to cover. Oh, we, we got a, one of our neighbors joined in, in not approving of this building, and, and their name is Beazer, okay? Now, who are the Beazers? Well, they're pretty well-known, they've been around here forever. And Tracy Beazer generated a written message, and I've given each of you a copy of it, and I hope you'll read it, because it's, it's really very thoughtful. She said it better than I can. I also attached to her message some of her experience in the, in the region, and some of the things that she's worked on that would make her message even more credible, because she's more of an expert at aesthetics, architecture, landscaping than I am.
We, we have that, and we have her message, and we'll take it under consideration. So you don't need to.
No, I'm not, I'm not gonna go through the message, you've got it in writing, so that's easier. Her husband, I also attached some of his background, and some of the great things he's done for nonprofits throughout the country, or throughout the, the region. If you wanna know more about the credibility of the Beazers, talk to Ann, because Ann is, her, her father, who is one of my cohorts, compatriots, about the same age, and, and one of my colleagues, he's a partner of Irving Beazer. So I think Ann and her family know more about the Beazers and more about their credibility than, than I do, certainly, because she's much closer. And they've been around and done these, these great service to the community things, even before Ann was born. It's been a long time.
That has been a long time.
So, talk to her before you decide, and get her input on the very thoughtful messages the Beazers have. Now, what, I just wanna leave with one final thing. Naturally, we, the, the people want the application to be denied, but that, that you may not wanna do, just say no. That doesn't mean that we can't continue to work on this with a view toward everybody winning. So what I would like to propose as a possible alternative to denying it or accepting it this evening, is that you table it. And why table it, or why, why give, give it a little more time to sink in to you and to the rest of people? Because of this, we would like to propose a meeting between representatives of our group, representatives of the Russell group, and if the city would like to appoint one or two people to participate also, we could have an informal discussion. And out of that, I think there's a good possibility we could reach some kind of accommodation or a settlement, which would be better than going to court. Settlements are always better than having a knock-down trial in court.
We are painfully aware of that.
Knock-down trial in court, everybody loses.
Yes.
So I, I would really like to suggest that, that you either deny it or table it to give us some time to meet with the Russell people, if they are willing. And, you know, we welcome Russell to the community, we're not trying to keep them out, we're trying to keep them in. And so give that some consideration, and hopefully, out of that, could come a settlement which would take each of you off the hot seat. You wouldn't have to, you wouldn't have to come to a hard decision in defense, somebody or part of the voters of the city of Oakwood, everything. It could be settled among the parties with your help.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Any questions?
Questions?
Nope. No questions for Mr. Harlemont? Okay. Who else would like to address council?
Mr. Harlemont.
Oh, wait, okay, I think, I think these guys still have homework. Thank you. You need to step up to the.
I have one factual matter.
Well, you have to.
From Mr. Harlemont.
But step in front of the microphone, please, so people can hear you at home.
Thank you. The 1.5 acre parcel that Mr. Harlemont was speaking of is not for sale that I know of, it's owned by Randall Residence, it's been approved for assisted living use, so I don't think that parcel is in play.
All right, thank you. Who else would like to address council?
I'm Mr. Harlemont.
Well, no, we know the facts on that parcel, yeah. But we're okay with that, that's, we're fine. And then Mr. Arnovitz wants to readdress.
I'd like to just add one more comment, that throughout this process, the development team has tried to encourage discussion with all neighbors, even to the point where we had a cocktail evening at Dayton Country Club, and invited everybody with the help of the city's address to come and discuss the project with us. The only person that came was Mr. Harlemont. And we talked with him enjoyably that evening. At that point, he gave us more of the impression that he was in favor of the project. Now, he has the right to discuss that and change his mind on some of those things, but the parcel tonight, I, I don't know that Russell Total Wealth, they've invested tremendous amounts of time, energy, and funds on this site. I don't know that they're prepared to move to any other location in Sugar Camp, and, you know, that would take different meetings, but, you know, they would like to start construction as soon as possible and have a decision made as quickly as possible, and hopefully, it's favorable, because we've tried to work very hard to bridge the gap for everybody. Knowing that we can't always please everybody, and some people may not ever be happy unless it's, if nothing ever happens there.
Okay.
So you can add to this as a.
Step in front, step in, well, go to the mic, go to the mic, and keep your comments very brief, we're getting, it's getting late.
The, the Russell people had this meeting that he spoke of, that's several months ago, and I was hoping to get an invitation, but I never did. I had to call the Country Club where the meeting was, and I asked them, "When is this meeting?" And they said, "Well, it's this afternoon." I said, "Oh, okay, well, I'll come over." I was the only one who showed up, that's correct. I did not, did not, did not give them or anybody the impression that I was either for or against this project. I simply listened.
Okay, that's fine, and I suspect we will not, that's not gonna be part of our deliberation.
Yeah. I, I, the, the, the idea that the 1.5 acre tract is not for sale, all you have to do is ask them whether it is for sale. It is not on the market, they don't have a realtor, but has anybody come up and knocked on our door and said, you know, "Can we talk to you about buying this thing?"
The fact of that matter is, we in fact have, and they don't return our.
I'm sorry, I can't.
The fact of the matter is, we have, and they do not return our calls.
Oh, okay, fine. Well, what you need is a realtor who's like Mr. Arnovitz, go for it, yeah.
Okay. Who else would like to address council?
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Please, again, state your name for the record.
Yes, I'm Charles Cerny, and I live at 201 Macefield Road, and part of the Hatcher Hills group who has signed the petition to talk about the compromise. So I think one comment that, that's probably part of the larger collection that we've had in this discussion, that I wanna just remind the group of tonight also, is that in the last ten years, as the development plan has gone forward, and you've made these acquisitions, also within the city of Oakwood, you've done some other improvements and incredible things, such as the schools, such as the addition as like the mikvah, which has blended very, very well with the existing Sugar Camp facilities, and this building that you're in tonight, okay, that we're managing. And I want you to take that away as that thought of how the citizens, not only in Oakwood, but also with Hatcher Hills, have thought a lot about wanting to have that type of transitional capability and transitional view. So please take that as a thought, because we do have that in mind, of that grounding of what it looks like as a whole, all right? And, and once again, we know that business is a very important part of the community of Oakwood, and we want that to happen, and so once again, we do say, we're welcoming Russell, but we want that in such a way that it will be the greater part of the whole community of the city of Oakwood. Thank you.
All right, thank you. If you'd like to address council, please come down and state your name for the record. I don't recall you swearing in, did you?
I apologize.
Well, we can do that right now.
Do you not need to?
I was, but I didn't know I would speak, to be honest with you.
Do you swear or affirm that you'll tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in any testimony before council tonight?
I do, thank you.
And can you state your name and address for the record?
My name's Brian Morris, I live at 325 Macefield, so just up the street. My wife and I did receive all the, the letters from, from Mr. Harlemont, and appreciate that. We wanted to just come in here and, and hear a little bit before we really made a decision, and, and I'll be honest with you, that we, we feel really good about, you know, some of the things that you brought out, making sure that, trying to take care of all the landscaping and, and views that the neighborhood would see. But I do feel real strongly that I'd like to then really put in our, our vote for, for what, what was expressed here from the Hatcher Platt. So the sixty-six and now sixty-eight.
Thank you very much. Who else would like to address council? Come on up, I don't recall you.
I did, I will again.
Okay, well, no, you're okay, if you, if you did, we'll take your word for that, if you can address your name and address.
Sure, my name is Steve McGowan, I live at 301 Far Hills, so I'm also part of the Hatcher Platt. We live at Far Hills and Rubicon, so. We've only been Oakwood residents for a year now, we just moved into the Dayton area, and we actually just moved into Ohio from Michigan, so we don't, my wife and I and our three kids, we don't have the benefit of experience of having lived here and really understanding the character of the community. But what I can say is, is that we did study the city pretty intently when we came and when we decided to move to Oakwood. We looked at some of the other surrounding communities, we looked at Kettering, we looked at Centerville. All of those communities have strong schools, but what they lack and what Oakwood seemed to have were strong communities. We've been very happy to live in Hatcher Hills so far. We've now been to two of the annual block parties, we've been to the, my wife's been to the annual Christmas ornament exchange, and our kids enjoy playing with all the other kids in the neighborhood, and my wife's been active in the moms group, so we've been thrilled with our decision to move here to Oakwood. I came to the meeting with an open mind, I wanted to come to both educate myself and also to be supportive of the other neighbors that do have stronger opinions probably than me on this matter. And in the course of hearing about the plan and, and thinking really about the reasons why I wanted to come to Oakwood, primary for me was the schools, was the community, was the neighborhood. So after hearing everything, this, this sounds like probably the best. So, after hearing everything, this sounds like probably the best commercial design that could be done. But I think that my position would be to ask the council to keep this a residential plot and keep expanding the residences within Oakwood. I think that what this community has going for it is unique. It is not like Kettering. It is not like Centerville. And I would encourage the council to protect that and to pursue other avenues that continue to expand the residential areas. So, I appreciate the time and the education today.
Thank you very much. Welcome to Oakwood.
Thank you.
Who else would like to address council? Okay. We are going to then...let me make sure I have my protocol right. We would close the public hearing, or do we need to hear from Jay about the special use standards before we close the hearing?
Yeah, Jay was gonna run through those to do the timing. I think you can go ahead and close the public hearing prior to him doing that. You're not taking for the test, am I right?
Well, that's your last chance. It's quarter to 10. Okay.
I can say one other thing?
Okay. Come on down.
I didn't know about the backlit sign until today. Please don't do that, if nothing else. Thanks. The backlit sign that's going to go on the building?
No, I believe that the planning commission said they would not allow that to occur.
Thank you, planning commission.
Yes.
Mayor, members of council, as you know, there are nine special use standards that we typically apply to applications like this. Because of the lateness of the hour, I'm not sure it would be all that beneficial for me to go through the standards. I guess what I would say is that from a staff perspective and looking at this application, we believe this application meets or exceeds each one of the nine standards. So, that would be the staff's position on that. And again, I would reiterate that the planning commission has recommended by a 3-0 vote that you not only redesignate the 4.3 acre parcel from residential to commercial, but that you also approve the proposed site plan with the condition that the signed logo on the east side of the building be non-illuminated. And again, for the benefit of everyone in attendance this evening, council now goes into deliberation and either votes to approve, disapprove, or approve with conditions, the two matters before them this evening, the master plan amendment and also the special uses on the building itself.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Jay? With council's permission, I would like to have a five-minute recess for a restroom break.
Council permits.
The council permits. I'll be right back. Again, in the interest of time, we have previously read the nine standards that was submitted to the planning commission, and we get the packets from the planning commission. So, rather than having Jay go through each one of those nine, does anyone have any specific questions about those nine standards? I was proposing that we would make a motion to approve those as part of the record. Could I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion on just adding those standards to the record?
Other than you're correct that we've reviewed those already?
Yes.
Had a packet from them from the planning commission.
All right. Great. Well, then, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. You know, we have, again, as...is that thing still up there? Yeah. We have two things to decide or deliberate. The first one is, should we approve of the master plan amendment that would take this parcel from residential to commercial? And then, secondly, obviously, if we say no on that, well, then two is moot. But if we agree with the motion to change it from residential to commercial, then the next question is, would we approve or deny or approve with conditions the use for this particular three-story building? Does everybody understand that? Okay. Does anybody want to talk about how their thought process as far as how they would look at, at least as the first issue, as to rezoning from residential to commercial?
Just in the fact that it was part of our settlement agreement with the residents of Point Oakwood that it become commercial use. I mean, that was part of the settlement agreement.
That, again, that...you're correct. I think that that is clearly what the residents of Point Oakwood wanted, several of whom, you know, came here or have indicated that they thought that was a good use of that property. I know we have some people in the Hatcher Hills section that also support it, but we also have some that do not. Mrs. Hilton, do you have anything to add on that?
I would definitely approve of being converted from residential to commercial.
Okay.
I mean, just some of the folks I've talked to, just practical things like the traffic, it's gonna be, you know, Monday through Friday, eight to five, not every single day of the week, you know, that kind of thing.
Right.
When converting it to commercial.
Okay. And Mr. Epley, do you have anything to add to that?
I also support the true master plan amendment from residential.
Okay. As it relates to the special use for the three-story building, any concerns? I mean, I'm hearing concerns about maybe some of the architecture, but I haven't really heard anybody complain about the landscaping or lack thereof. It appears to be a very...in fact, some of the people specifically, like Mr. Jones, who directly next door to this place, thought it was a very, very nice landscaping, and he said he supported that project. But do you have any thoughts on that?
I wouldn't have supported it without the good landscaping plan. I mean, that's, you know, just...
Well, landscaping is...
I mean, I don't want to say hide the ugly building, but...
Right. Well, now, my architect friend here might disagree with that.
But no, I was impressed with...well, I like the building, but with the landscaping plan, I think just sort of makes it all sort of fit together to me.
Okay. Mr. Stevens, do you have anything?
No. I mean, after all the research and all the documents we've received, my opinion on this is that the building itself matches more of Sugar Camp than any other building that could possibly go up. I mean, I don't, you know...I like the fact that it's not identical to Sugar Camp, you know, the yellowish buildings, if you will, but I also like that it's not so different that it's...it looks out of place. I don't...it's good...it is, I'll call it in-between Point Oakwood and Sugar Camp, but I think being a buffer with the distance from the road, the landscaping that we've talked about, because that was my number one concern, you know, and when that was taken care of, because I want to make sure that it, you know, and obviously with my questions, I'm more concerned about the hill, the runoff, what it's gonna look like from down below slash from Far Hills. I have no problem with that. I personally like the building, so I don't have a problem with the building. We have multiple style homes and office buildings in the city. I don't see this being a problem. It's not so far-fetched. It doesn't fit...I mean, we could argue all day that one of our newest buildings in the shops of Oakwood doesn't match, you know? I'm not gonna start citing them. I know they're in my head, but I know...I mean, they don't all match, you know? Not everything can be an English Tudor. Not everything can be a colonial. You know, we have to look ahead, what the styles are, and I ask my questions that I had concerns about, and I feel that they've answered them, so I have no problem with this.
I know that, and I think your point about the...about how the runoff works, I thought was answered very well by the architect and that it's not going to adversely impact the Point Oakwood neighbors. The other issue, you know, the opposition brought up a point about could we do underground parking? And having been on council as long as I have, I recall Dr. John Eastman saying that essentially, you know, it's on top of bedrock. Underground parking is probably impossible to do and would definitely be very, very cost prohibitive. I know we've had other discussions with, you know, the Kettering Medical people about, you know, what their plans are for 2600, which we still don't know because they haven't brought us anything. But when we asked them about could we do underground parking in the business district or a parking garage in the business district, they said, "You don't want to do that. It costs too much." And they know because they spent all their money on underground parking over there at Kettering Hospital. But...so, I don't think that was a practical solution as it related to the parking lot. But do you have anything else to add on that, Mr. Epley?
I believe the proposal, the three-story building and landscaping meets the special use standard.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, you know, the resolution that I introduced way back when, which still doesn't have a second, by the way, is to grant approval of an amendment to the approved master plan for the Sugar Camp and Point Oakwood development affecting the southwest portion of said development. And the resolution is written in such a way that it provides for the rezoning from residential to commercial and then approves the specific plan that was submitted to the planning commission last month. So, I would, again, make a motion that we adopt that, but I would need a second.
Second.
Is there any other discussion before we close our deliberations?
The only question I had is regarding the lighting.
The application before us incorporates the prohibition on lighting the east side of that building. I mean, the sign is allowed, but it's not allowed to be illuminated. The west side is allowed to be illuminated, but that's part of what they brought to us. And so, you're...and we have that incorporated in our resolution. Hearing no other discussion, Lori, would you like to call a roll, please?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for everybody staying. We don't get to see many people all the time, so we really enjoy, you know, having interactions with you all. But so, we still have a handful of other items on the agenda, but I've lost the agenda. Here it is. We have no staff reports. And welcome back, Mr. Byington.
Thank you.
And do we have a city manager report?
Yes, Your Honor. Just a few quick things. First, I wanted to comment on the Schroyer Road Project. As you well know, that job is 99% completed. Roadway's been open now for two or three weeks in the new configuration, and all the comments we've received here at City Hall Public Works Center have been positive. So, I think it's been well-received and certainly a nice new pavement to drive on.
Yes.
And I think all those protected left-turn lanes, particularly as residents of Oakwood are going northbound on Schroyer, turning left or westbound into our city, why those are gonna make for a much, much safer roadway condition. So, we're real pleased with the project and very pleased with Barrett Paving, who was our prime contractor, just an excellent company to work with. And, you know, I need to publicly thank...a number of people on staff had a hand in this, but I guess I'll mention three folks tonight. Tom Long, you know our foreman, Tom Long. Tom did a lot of work up front a year and a half ago when we were engaged in the safety study, did many, many observations out there, traffic counts, turning movement counts, and gets a lot of kudos for his work on that. And then, during the entire construction phase, another foreman of ours, Dave Shuey, really oversaw all the construction, worked with the contractor and the inspector from Kettering. And Dave did a fabulous job doing that work. And then, from the public safety department, Captain Mike Jones, who was here earlier this evening, he was our liaison with the safety department and saw to it that every day during the construction period, we had officers focused in that area, you know, enforcing the 25 mile an hour, you know, reduced speed zone and seeing to it that the north-south lanes in our, you know, inner neighborhoods to the west of Schroyer were monitored and, you know, used properly and safely. So, kudos to Mike Jones as well. So, real happy about that project. The last remaining work is finishing a little bit of irrigation system installation, which is taking place right now, will be done in the next day or two. And then, we'll put some trees in, the center medians, and a little bit of mulch, and then that project will be completely finished. Just a quick comment at our council meeting last month. As you know, we had several citizens here expressing concern about some areas of Oakwood regarding, you know, vehicle speeds and really matters of public safety, pedestrian safety, and that sort of thing. As you had committed, Mayor, we will make a more formal report on our plans to look at the areas that were brought up last month, and we'll do that at our next council meeting on December 11th. But I will tell you that, again, Captain Jones and our safety department has been in touch with all the folks that were at that meeting a month ago here in the council chamber and is continuing dialogue with them to give as much information as we can about that, those situations. And just a quick thank you to all the citizens that volunteered last Saturday at How Extreme. We had a wonderful cleanup event, dug out a whole bunch of honeysuckle, and I think we probably had 30 or 40 people there. It was a great turnout, a wonderful mix. We have some older folks. We had, you know, young folks with kids, and we had a bunch of high school kids that showed up as well. I don't know if they're there voluntarily or if they had ordered to be there, but everybody pitched in, and we got a lot of work accomplished. And my final comment tonight is about Chief Alex Beberus. You'll remember, two meetings ago, Alex was here giving his last staff briefing, and his last day with the city is this coming Friday. And we had a wonderful farewell luncheon with him, for him, last Friday here at the city building, and a large number of staff, particularly from his department, but many others, were here to thank him for 11-plus years of service as our chief. Alex was our sixth chief, looking back to 1955.
Wow.
Not sure how many we had before 55, but since 55, he was our sixth chief. And, you know, he came here just a little over a year after we moved into the new facility. So, you know, part of his initial challenge was to, you know, get the department functioning and comfortable in an altogether new public safety department. For those who have been in Oakwood for a long time, you'll remember that this building, before that 2002, '03, '04 project, why we had the public safety department on the west, the east side of the building, and we had the administrative side on the west side of the building. And we flip-flopped that in the project here. So, it was really essentially an altogether new building in which his department operated. And he did a fabulous job early on, you know, getting the department set up and functioning there. Secondly, you know, we...Alex possessed the personnel skills that were needed in this unique community we have here. And as you know, there's a wide variety of citizens that we deal with, and arguably in our public safety department, you know, you see the full range, maybe more so than in other departments. And Alex did a wonderful job of dealing with and communicating with all of our various citizens. And my last comment is, you know, Alex had the joy, the privilege, the bad luck in, you know, being here on staff as a department head in arguably our most important department at a time when, as Mr. Harlemont pointed out, we lost the estate tax, and we went through a very, very difficult financial challenge and period of time. And I can tell you personally that Alex was very, very supportive of me and, you know, what I needed to get done here in terms of cost-cutting, you know, controlling staff, even reducing staff during that time period, even in his department. And, you know, I'll forever be grateful to him for the manner in which he embraced that challenge and supported me and the organization. So, again, he'll be here through Friday, and then we'll move on. And Chief Alan Hill will...or Captain Alan Hill will be Chief Alan Hill effective this Friday, and he'll be our seventh public safety director since 1955.
Good report. Any questions or comments for Mr. Clops? Then we will go to council comments. Mr. Epley?
Thank you, Mayor. Given the late hour, I have no comments tonight.
I'm really thankful for you on that. Mrs. Hilton?
Thank you, Your Honor. Given the late hour, I will talk even faster than usual. I wanted to commend Carol Collins and the whole Sister City organization. We had visitors here from La Vezina. Several people, I got to meet many of them at the Sunday night event at Flyboys, and then again at the luncheon on Monday, but they were all very appreciative, very...just really friendly and really enjoying the friendship we've had for many years. I actually visited La Vezina two years ago. And the Historical Society, I went to their annual meeting last week. And of note, Mark Grizzly was honored for his many, many years of service as president... for his many, many years of service as president, board member, and many, many things. He does stuff like cuts the grass at the house, does the newsletter. He did the Hidden Oakwood Walk, I think just a week or two ago. But anyway, so that, that was kind of neat to, to see him being honored. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
One simple comment. I would like to personally congratulate again Judy Cook. Judy is still with us tonight. It's always great to see Judy. And this is just a good opportunity for me to express how grateful I am for Judy and the fact that she was the one that talked with me about joining council. And she's been my motivation, mentor, and inspiration to do what I do. And thank you very much, Judy. And congratulations on your new park.
Vice Mayor Byington?
I will second those comments. She was also very instrumental in, in me doing what I do now. I also wanted to remind everybody, tomorrow is election day. I generally do not make, or ask for endorsements or whatever, but two fine council members running unopposed tomorrow, but they still need your votes. So, please do. Also, I want to make a, a plea that my beautiful wife is a poll worker. She's a, I'm not sure which poll she's gonna be working at. It's not gonna be in Oakwood and city of Dayton generally, but be nice to your poll workers. They're trying very, very hard. It's a tough job. A lot of people don't know the process, and they have to explain it to them. They don't know what they're supposed to bring. They don't know where they're supposed to be voting. It's a very long day for them. And so just, as you're voting, doing your civic duty, please be nice to your poll workers. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know whether we should go to every precinct in Dayton and try to vote, or what the deal was, where you were going with that. Again, it's, it's late, but vote yes for issues three and four, and vote no for one and two. It's easy. One, two, no. Three, four, yes. But I do also want to thank Judy. I'm, I'm hoping that if I stay on council long enough, the city will name a garbage truck after me. So, but we appreciate, we appreciate all your fine work on behalf of the city for a long time. And, and yes, you, I had, you took me down to the King Cole. How long ago has that been? And said, "We want you to run it for council." I says, I don't know, I, that's right. So anyway, well, with that, we will, yeah, we will adjourn our meeting. The next one will be on Monday, December 11. Thank you very much. Meeting's adjourned.